Oh, the best book to read is the Bible. Padimpa Sresta Ghandhamu Bible. Padimpa Sresta Ghandhamu Bible. Anudinam patinshina prema thoda nadupunu. Oh, padimpa Sresta Ghandhamu Bible. Dunya me sabse pyara pustak Bible. Dunya me sabse pyara pustak Bible. Padeja usko rozparo, saame ka tarah koi na ho. Oh dunya me sabse pyara pustak Bible. Nattu naa watch. FSC patrika naalga vaajchay. Padukundu panendu kalissoda. Efficient chapter four. Reading altogether. Thank you. Verses eleven, verse eleven and verse twelve. FSC patrika. Naalga vaajchay. Padukundu panendu. Manamandaramu, visvasa vishyamlo, devanik vidnana vishyamlo, ekatvam pundi. Christina ku kaligina, sampurnata ku samanamayina sampurnata. FSC naga desirable koradagina dian ardhamu. Yaarajchay lo, aaru koradagina sangathalu, parshuddha atmadu, epatriklo gandastan jeshnaadu. Madhita chaymu. The blessing of a believer, visvasya kaasiravada. Andi KFC patrika madhita chayin lo. Prabhani Yesu Kristu Tandraga Devudu, paralokamulo, atma samandhamayana prataasiravadam, manaku anagrahinch. So this epistle starts with the blessing of God. Devanik asiravadamuto, aramam outtuna patrika idi. Chapter two, rendava chaymu. Talks about the building of God. Devanik kattadamu. Adi akare vachnaal lo, manukku naapkan sevarathu undi. Manam atma samandhamayana, devanik nivasa sthalamuga unnaateku kattabadut sunnam. Andi ke person who was brought into the blessing of God, can only be a part of the building of his team. Yoraita asiravadamlo nikuchinaru, varmaathir me devaalamiga kattubadaya ukashmu undi. Kaasiravadamlo nikrakunna unte, var devaalamiga kattubadaya ukashmu ledu. Andi kinkai yesu nangikarinsite yaasiravada. Andi ke rakshin gunchina prastavanya, pustanglo, ivaranagachappu padindi. Adi jagaduthpatik munde devudu, sidam jeshna pranali ka. Yedavu kontavantelsnatlar endval samstral kitamespravachinadu, appudu gada, janipin nanthakumunnu, sangatainchan kontavantantuntar, tilaikamai kanga. Andi kara bible la rai badindi, the Lord has planned this salvation well before the war began. Lokam puttaka munupae, sujinse badakku munupae, daniki unka padam varayat tilagalo, jagaduthpati madalakku munupae. Andi ke jagat tu, baiti kanabadakku munupae, devudi rakshna pranali ke erpat jeshna. Kalam sampurnamayana praspravi bhumi dikuchinadu. Silu lo raktham kaachichani poey samachsevaru. Ododinan lechi, parlokashtalamula asinadayunnadu. Yesu raktham prati paapkunni kadik shuddhi karistun. Ka yesu nangikarinsukunda paap aksham apadu marmanas pondukunna unte. Marlaga naapkan jestunam prabhani yesu nandu visvasamunsutti. Ennu meetingil jepinna yesu var chaptane unte. Si var daai chaptane unta, indi kante, dinukarike neeminsu badam, we are commissioned to preach the power of the cross. Silo shektanugurinsu praktinsutan, kitall starts the forgiveness. Shamaapanato, marmanastto, rakshinto, parlokasiravadamto ida aramavat. Ilaga rakshnapundinavaaru, pratham samandhamayana devaalamu unnaatu karike, rendava chayinla kattabartunna. Andi ke chapter one deals with the blessing. Chapter two talks about the building. Chapter three. Talks about the behavior of the church. This sanghamu, elantu pravardhana kaligundalog naapkan sevarathu. Chen konzarlu konne matals outtuna appudu. Yevu literalga saachmeyana anupistadu. Aru me kanupichindu ledu tilidigani naa kanupistadu. Me kuudanupistadu anukuntai purasadu undi, modavachay mu, FSC patrika, naalga vachna. Moodu padnalu, three fourteen. Aa tandriyadutan nenmokaluni. It's all aajchimis, that posten powalu, makarinsun. Slane klanpeere guddu manupalaktaniki ledu. Alantu vaadukunne sangathalu matladutunna planupistadu. Devu sanelo kuchinapranthay namokarinchii, pratikutamo. Christ's arupamlo nikravalanayin udesh. Idu modavach. Panaalga chayinlo nikuchitappudu ke. Sanghami yekka, shema bruddu karaku, itsna kroparamulano manuknaapkan jestunadu. The body of Christ. Christi yekka, shera. Andi ke shera mokkate, atma mokkate, akshana mokkate, nerikshna mokkate, baptesma mokkate, devu dakkade, ane padalu. Padepadey aajchayinla manuknaapkan sevarathu unta. Alag okka shera melonik manuvuchinanganika, pum manukrakrakala ina, kroparamula inanagrahinchunadu. Indi kante sangam shema bruddu pundi, prabhuyeka, ruhumlo nikravalan devanik udesh. Talantile vadukunda, varaile vadukunda, sangam shema bruddu ponda ledu, manukristus arupamlo nikki, raliv. Praido aajchayin lo. It talks about the bride. Feli kuthunugurinsu matladu. Andi ke needikka lo ku vyavahugurinsu prastavanu, eplan me kanupichindu, indi ku powalu unnaatundu diskunachinadu. Salasangathalu raasidu gada, parlokasamandhamayana asiravadamu, christu prema. Ine rasintarvata. Unnaatundu nendis kunachinadu inte, vyavahavavastanugurinsu matladu aramich. Idi indi ku ikkum matladadu inte, sangani kespravu varu kunna relation, samandhanu chaptanike, ani vyavahugunse prastavinchunadu, anna sangatimana kparshi. Andi ke pura ida aajchay lo, idu pramukkamayana sangathalu manuchuchinadu. Madhita chaymenti, blessing, asiravada. Rendava chaymenti, building, kattadam. Mudavachay menti, behavior, pravardhana. Naalga aajchay menti, body, yesu prabhuyeka, shera. Naalga aajchay menti. Sorry. Sitlupurupadu jepinna appadu ardhaventande, jetlaagundu. Avakarindamun second lo mind absent aidu. Aida aajchay menti, bride of Christ. Yesu prabhuyeka, feli kumarthe sangham. Andi ke o peribetadamiki, inte glorious church, mahimagala sangham. Aarva chaymu, it talks about the battle. Akka porataanugurinsu matladu. Aa porataaniki saynikil gavalanee, aa saynikil laagundalanee, aarajchay mantaprastavinchu manu sangatimana kparshi. Andi ke aarajchay lu, aaradhatmiku maina sangathalu, manuknaapkan jestunai. Ipudma manam madhita chayinlo nindi, asiravinsvaradi, salaavandam akkida aegipotam, salingka asiravadumto bhaanu undu gada, anantuntu. Atma samandhamayana devaalamiga kattavattanike, manamu istapadu mundukram, indi kante kattabadu pandu custom. Kattabadalantu yedan ausramo danichakala, yedan ausramo danni, aasthalamula unsala, andi there is a chisel used for it. Danikkaraku, konne saadhanaal vaadal, vaadu tenuppi bhaadakalugutadu. Adi manuk salaibandh anupistadu. Kani adalekundu manam atma samandhamayana sajjiralaga, devanik sanganga kattavada lemu, kadi enta ausram. Alag mettu mettu ganek sangathalaknaapkan jestu. Punaalga aajchay mu. Sanghamu elaguk shema bruddu ponda techkarakai, enrakrakala ina yuvalana varamalanachinadu, manuknaapkan jestu. Yesu prabhuvai complete man, paripurnamayana purushu, complete God, paripurnamayana devu. There is no imperfection in him. Andi elantu, asampurnata ledu. Ati prabhu, manalakkuudan anta standardlo diskrallanukortu. Salasal manuki, vakhinavatunna appadu anupistadu gada, andu be holy as I am holy. Be perfect as a perfect. Andi yodlo dagrunalu valto polskundi, val elagunnaarusukundu, antu matra holykuntu seripodden japputledu. Alagattemanuk baavuntadu, indi kante mana index reference scale lo valayuntadu. Karim manin reference point inte, yes prabhuvai. Then he, there is no scale for his holiness, there is no scale for his perfection, there is no scale for his love, there is no scale for his spirituality, there is no scale for his humility, and there is no scale for any of his attributes. Anda dayvalakshnalaki deniki, kolamana muledu. Anda kolatakandana, nannidayvalakshnalainlo, sankshiptamayana. Managagar kustasal kolotan scale ebatratledu. Yedavu uttanunna lagat zero point thananna startikal, discoutle. Indi maru maru mekkunmundukelala, aascalepuri chkal, elagari chkautledu gada, manistama. Atlanaradhu, andi powalu maatmaatik maatmaatika padam vartha, atlanaradhu, atlanaradhu, atlanaradhu. Karika manam munduku sahipotaniki, etu yesu prabhuvai, margam yesu prabhuvai, prothshaham yesu prabhuvai. Alagu. Ee samamilo, yesu prabhuvai konkoka dayvalakshnamlo, manam munduku sahipotukarike, konne sangathal netskotaniki, manam prayitnchesta. Madhita, the habits of Christ. Christi yekka, alavatlanugurinsu manuchuchinadu. Inte manam kuudalagu, alavatlu vaadukakaligunneta avasi. Rendavadi, holiness of Christ. Christi yekka parshuddatha, manam karigunadum pramuk. Pudmoodadi, helping of Christ, leta help like a Christ. Christu ala, sahayemu, shade. Arre manaveen sahayemu, yesu ala jastam, yantanjastam, ekranjastam, lakrakrakala undutsu. Bautik main sahayankante, adhatmik main sahayansala pramuk. Andi ke ainu peere, helper, sahayakku. Nota irabayavutokirtana, Psalm hundred and twenty one, rendava vachna. Psalm hundred and twenty one, verse two. Aaayana bhumiya kaashamshan sujinchinavadu ganika, aaynavalanene sahay. Tholana manuk sahayin jestaman chepparankundi. Cheppi chakekununtani kuudala ukashmuntu. Andu porupadu jepinara, kavalan jepinara, tapitskotani jepinara, kana leymayana, valsa hayin chakepots. They say that they are helpful, but they become helpless. But G S says I am helper, and he continues to be helper until end. And then sahayakran chaptane unta do, alag sahayakka gavuntanene unta. Andi ke israeli lu, varvar sthalal ondi, erstlem kelleeta appudu. Ipaatlu vaadutupeluvanani, yatra kirtana manukparshi. Nanthlo variki, devanik sahayemu, varilletaplu badratu kuudagavala. Indi kadi pudmaadu manuk paashrodlu, paashkarlu levaappudu. Valila margalat salaavand dangalundaval, doopidi jeshival. Yatrakalumigilse gada, inte meermajspintariemo. Yatrakalipudala gosarun, gumplukumplosar, kutumbalukutumbalostar. Christe vataru kutumbalinduchinulukilsmawur kela gosaro. Gumplukumpplukumpplukumpplukumplandu, uncontrollable gosuntu. Dangalakkuudala gumplunappudu, valpanjesckodun sala teeligavunt. Israeelil kuudan dan madalukuni bairshbadaaka. Andi, Indianugurinsu agmatla jappalante, Kashmir madalukuni, Kanyakumarana elagantamo. Alag israeli deshinugurinsu agmatla jappalante, dan madalukuni bairshbadaaka, anu vaadap, aachivara, eechivara. Alag prazalu, piaavalu itenadisichvalu, kontadanavantalite gardhalimidharavudam, aanavaid. Alagirutunavu var margalara krakala ina kastalibbandalu, kontavandana lalabai rodlu pradenjeshkuudan erstlem jayavala. Al mandatoradinalo, panndelanindan prati abbay savansunla, moorzalakachstang erstlem karavala. Al mandatory, moorpanagalkaravala, paskapanagotti, parnasalala, apandagotti, taravpentikostpandagotti, vi moorpanagalki, valakachstangaravalsin. Rakapotha, dharamashastanavu varnoopukunedi khag. Andi ke devanik prazalena israeli lu, i paskapanagapentikostupandaga, parnasalalapandaga, aachrinstutukarakai, panndelapayavana, purushalu, aravayala lobtunnavalu, mandator. Sisters optional. Kutumamantavalu bailderi illavalu, yemat anta miranatsu brother, adigudiputpetinti antabavundu, this optionani. Petikumayana guddu manu optional diskutunna manuk, India lo overheads are untadu. Pandakumundu, pandaktarvath, siluvichin tarvath, optional holiday enter. Alag optional manuke istamayate, leave claim jesh, silaepotha, man duty kala. Kruplukuchin tarvath, optional eh, but willing serving is expected. Prabhuvai thu balavantanchid, optional eh, realy akkrikadu niistamani, manukkarike anikraydhanam chilinchisilo dagarvidhala anagrahinchunadu. Andi akkrikadu nanprabhuani dagarunthanu, anu oraita akkada undagalutunna varasirav. Edutunnaan powa akkrikanaan edupuyaro, valamala kanpinshur. Udaahananiki, dayambatinu varni, yes prabhvaru, bhaavajeshna. And bible la rai badu, varu var bhaavajailaradu, kontavandilagantu, var bhaavajailaravali. Val japtargudu, maamalne, maavanne var bhaavajailaru, mai nevar bhaavajailaru, ma pillanne var bhaavajailaru. That is true sometimes, yodval bhaavajailar, kani marku edu muppedi, ina samastamunnu bhaavuga, ches. Avettikkarike prabhu akkukuchinadu, varu katlatenchinadu, varu sthalamantamachinadu. Oh brand new life ela createaitunsun, ainla kotta aashachinu. Bible la rai badindi var, anta daka, adamvalayunnadu. Ipudkujikummarunnadu, njeppimatla ardhaventunnae mekku. Adamvalayunnadu inte, batalakununnadu. Ipudu bible la rai badu, varu vastramul darinsukoni, yes padamliyada, kutsuntadu. Kutsani yes prabhuko chinnam manojeshna, inta manavante, nenmeetho pato ostana. Ostanaunna lemo prabhuvadilayintikelanadu, ramanunna lemo prabhuvacheyen jeped. Ostamunna lemo diskadal, gani ramanunna inte. Andi, varostananta ododilannu veli, yesani yandukhanikarapaduchesna karemulu, inta telecheyman. Bible la rai badu, varamati vidhichupinchivelli, dekapolenantata, yes tanakakshan jeshna, gopakare praktinsu, maramich. Kontavandu ramanjepinara, prabhu varu pilustochinadu. Var kuudavidhichupinchiprabonvamadichna. Saram ettik vishyamintante, devanik prazalena israeli la yathulayedutunnaappudu. Tamunutama kapaadukoleni, sahayapadaleni, sala parisitulunai. Andi ke var sahayinkarike eduruchinadu, kundalatatuma kanleetsunnamu, maaku sahayemu, venkhameth halframa. Ma dagarku sahayam ekkanudustundu. Pratimman shouldi help karike edurustunadu, andi ke mek Amerika lo, parisamayana maatintante, help, help, helper. Adi enta deep meaning untadu, maakudi help chenhanantu, avathalu varu positive diskundu, sala meltai potar. Help ane padama varneravillu, cashulevaru, thadu vere vishyam. Ekkanunma helpustundu, bhumiya kaasham sujinchina, yohavale maaku sahay. Nenu pukchinnamat adugot, samimunni, indi kadugalakuntunna nanti, kontavandu naavali drawsigunadu. Nenu drawsigunadu inta artamundigani. Meer kuudala drawsigunadu. Andi kala gaakununtanikadutu, yemat, ikiirtanalo, ensa rasin. Yemat, ripidumanusadunna gada, nota irabayakiti, rendu. Chepun, idavu chepun parla. Two times, huh? Madhita sar ekkada? Enna kirtana? Okay, one twenty one, verse one and two. Rendavadi? Rendavasar ekkada? Second verse, very good, inta tele undan nenanku ledu. Oh my god, I had to stay back in America. To accumulate at least iota of your knowledge. Yevachinavana annan, gani padavanana? Okay. Andis moorzal rasintari vachin, madhita sar nota irabayakiti rendu, rendavasar zudandi, nota irabay nalugu yenavadi. One twenty four, verse eight. Ah, idu rendavasar rasin. Tarvath marla adukta gurtvettukundi. Mudavasari. Nota muppay naluga. Mudavachinama. Nota muppay nalagumoodu, bhumiya kaashamshan sujinchina, yoho, asyonu lo nundi, ninnu, asiravinsu. Karika bhumiya kaashamshan sujinchina, devu de manuk asiremu, aaynuyudanundu, ee sahayemu, manukustu. Karika sahayamana dagara, indi ke adjective, bhumiya kaashamshan sujinchina, yohav. Andi sahayam jeshewanika capacity ma delialagada. Delialantain power emartingavala, pudkunni manu sahayamvanantav. Man paramithi undeyuntai, man paramithi datpeyuntai, okvala manu paramitankundi. Nenu miyudanini sahayamvandalantu, uput bojanumbetanantu, onan bojanumbetan. Agadagadrop chen, airportantu, drop ches. Sahayam, ike edan nakausramayandu, edu varu sadari, anta bojcheshta. Ipudu sahayam chesstar gadaani, manuk paramithi datadigantu, manan chailendi, udaahananna green card gavalanadigan. Nenu adigide, meer sahayam chesstane unna, var paramithundu gada. Uput bojanumbetagalaru, agadagadrop chen, anta chegalaru, ike edan chinnchinnasalal me capacity lo unna chegalaru, var ipud green card gavalanu, it's out of our capacity. Out of our purview. Karika ikkada devu sahayam jestunadu inta ardhaventande, it's all powerfulani, there is nothing out of his purview. Aayn yekka, nyantrana, giitakadati, inkayemi yulledu, andi ke ne bhumi, aakashamalo, ee sahayam gavalanana, okkada ilchibun. Dinvati emartumayundu, manamu italagijesha sahayemu, visshamanta. Devudu chesha sahayemu, konnanta. Vishyanki konnani, kantetada hundi. Andi ke nee puud sahayam chesstane unta do, andi sahayamlo, seasonalga undadu. Ledha localga undadu. Reasonalgagundadu, is help is universal. Andi sahayemu, andhariki andanatlagayin cheshtos. Aayne sahayin chepotha, manamintu sahayin jeshna, a sahayanika asiravadamu, radhanikkuudan manamerugadu. Andi, dani dwara, mailu ledu anikkuudan, manuk tells, kontavandu antuntar gada. Me mek sahayin jestam, me mek sahayin jestam. Entadaki jesteru, kontadaki jesteru. Kontadasha dadipen tarvata, var sahayin chailar. Prabhu pearu, andi sahayakudu, andi chesstune unta do. Bible la rai badindi, andi simhasanamu, sadakalamu. Andi ardhaventi, aayana razulakrazu, prabhulakprabhu. Sadakalamu, sahayam chetikarakai, yedalu chuchuvaru, andu manuk naapkan sevarathu ochi. Yod sahayamaduktaracheshtamonai nankuntadu. Maname ma, yavankuntamu? Njeppimatla ardhaventunnae, tiligmekku. Yor sahayamaduktaracheshtamanu prabhu ankuntadu, maname mankuntamu? Yor sahayamaduktaratapitskundamamamamankuntadu. Anta teda manisun, prabhukimani, manu ishalka skipka otani try jestamu, skipka leka blackai penananku. Yedavu kontavalu enta sahayamadukite, manu chegalikinanta visshamanto, goharanto chesbaitupattani prayitnchesta. Prabhu alagadu, adigina vaatkanthe, oh hints vaatannitkanthe, achadikamagacheshta. He is able to do more than what we ask, and the thing. Israeel vishyamlanthe, valamak manna gavalanadugaledu, neel gavalanadugaledu. Pudmanu neel diskolaantu, mental water adi, than sala, angamontadu. Valukurka bandalo nundin neel pravachinadu. Millionlu koddi prazalu, devu uchthamga sidapachinadu, danantatni, anavavinchunadu. This prabhu sahay. Zudandi, razula rendavagandam. Aarva chay, irabay edavachinam. Two Kings, chapter six, verse twenty seven. This is stunning statement. Yohawa, neeku sahayam chenidhi, nen ekkada nundi sahayam chidhi. Andi ke the primary source of help for all the human race is God. The secondary source for all the help is God's people, the church. So many times we distort or change disorder. Sanghami primary sourceani, devu de maina sahayin jestadu, mananku, devu de maina sahayinadu, devu de sahayin jayadu. Karika bible la rai badindi. Etu dicku zuchinadu, sahayam ledu, sahayam korakai, mundukuchivar lero, prabhuvai, mana sahayakku. Sahayam antene, manam konta crime chilinchala, ane telepatsubartun. Sahayam epudu. Ichivariki uchthanga undadu, konta crime unchundu. Diskunavari kadi uchthame. Bible lo, ayasandarbhalo, christi kvalapatunnavaru, devanik prazalenu, sawalato visigunchinaru. Kani prabhu var nadukotaniki. सहाय कुडू जुचन अट्लो वाक्यमलो मन गमिस्त देवड़ अलांट संदर्भालो वारकी सहाय जेस उदाहरण अनिकेश्या नल्ला युवा अच्छाई समिदी पदि वच्छन आइजे चॉप्टर फार्टी वन वर्स नाइन एंटी
भूति गत्तमुलनुंदे नेन पट्टुकुने दानी कुनलनुंदे पिलिच्छुकुनी नवाडा नीव नाक आसुल वनीयु नेन ने नुपेक्षिपका एर परिचकुटिन नेन नेन नीतो चेप्पीयुन्ना नीकु तोड़युन्ना बाय पड़कुन नेन नी देवड़नायुन्ना दिकुल पड़कुन नेन नीड बलपरतुन नीकु सहाय चेवाड
साधरणंग वाक्यम मन मककल लिललो तगलिच्छुकुन्द अंटा वॉल टेक्स्ट मादर नीकु सहाय मिचेवाडनु नेन इंग्लिश लाइव विल हेल्प दी नीकु सहाय जस्त मंशुलेरन मनक सहाय जस्ता मन अन्ना रनक ओन अंत्सय अंत्सयत नम्मत निक अमेरिका रावटंगे ने सहाय जस्त सदुलो सहाय जस्त लेदा ड्रॉप सीटनी सहाय जस्त अंते अंत्सयत नम्मत योर मेर मंशुल सहाय गौर अनकुण्ट गदा नेन जप्त नान बो वंदशातंक कोर्ट नम्मत कनिक वाल साधरणंग दानी जरिंसकुन्दा उन्दोत्स कनिक प्रभु मनक सहाय जस्तना नंटे वंदशातंक आयन नम कनाय वंदशातंक जेस्व योर वंदशातंक जेरो वाडन नम्मत वंदशातंक योर वंदशातंक जस्ता मंटरो वाडन वंदशातंक नम आकाणं चेत मन कनिकमैन ना पोराटाल वोटमलु कुरुंगदल मन सुस्त अंदिकेश्या गरंदमलो ई माट पदे पदे कन्पस्त नेन नीक सहाय जेस नेन नीक सहाय जेस सहाय अनिक वलपट्टु वाल्ल उन्नार मनक तेल्स गदा एक देवन प्रजलन इसरायलीलु मीक बाग परिस्थितिमैन कुन्ता इश्या गरंदम मोदिटाइच्छे मधुक मृपाईतम राइच्छे नदा का पातनी बंदनक पोलिक नल्ला राइच्छे नुंदे आरवा आर्ड राका कोतनी बंदनक पोलिक देवन प्रजलन इसरायलीलु बाबलोनलो डेब्बाय समुसराल बानिसले गुन्ना वाले जेसे परपाट बट्टी देवन दिनानु वाला चिन्सले मन साला साला अनकुण्टा एम आए तेल एंटी आदि रं पति दान गुर्तुवेत्कुन्दी फॉर एवरीथिंग देर इस अकाउंट अंते पातनी बंदनलो इसरायलीलु पापन बट्टनालु रूप्पे संसराल बानिसलु गुन्ना विडिपिंस बडिन्तरवा तरिनमलो वार देवनी पर्षद दिनानी लक्कच चेलेन्दि लक्ष्पेट्न अंदिकने डेब्बाय समुसराल देवड़ वारनी बाबलोनलोनी पंपिच डेब्बाय समुसराल बाबलोनलोनी पंपिच इन्तरवाता तिरिगी वार नीतिस्कुन वच्ची वारकी सहाय जेसी दायो मंदिरंगा निर्मिन्स्तनिकी देवड़ कोणत्वंदर नवाड़कुन्ना अलांट राजुल लकरास इन्तंते कोरेश आयन पर्षियन रास कोरेश अंते आस फ्रॉम अभाव पायनुंदे वच्छन वाडन अर्थम सायरस अंते मंद राजुल कोणत्वंदर उन्नार नेव कत्नेसल लाड वाल साधनंग बाबलोन राजुल वालके जप्त रंटे बुद्धु नदा गानी सिरिरमेक कुण्ट अंते अर्थमेंटंटे साला कटिनंगा करुड़गटिन अट्लगा चेत्रल विषयम वार प्रवाड दिस्तोस्त इलंट कोरेश रासुनु देवड़ अन्नाडो नामंद कापरी आयन मदर टाइटलु नाचित्तमंत नेरेवेट्स वाडा रेंड टाइटलु मुड़वदि नेन अम्शेकिंचन वाडनु आयन अन्ना इप्पुर आ राज दगरी केल्डी डेब्बाय समुसराल आईपे ने जप्पे वाल गावलगा योर रल्टर बरी मनमै मन कुण्डा राज दगरी केल्ला रिस्क गदा अट एट तेल्पोत इप्पुर मादर प्रजास समय मुने नाकड़काल तेकड़काल तंडक राज इस्तेल दिनालंटे गदा इस्तेल लंटे दे राज दगरी केल्ला लंटा अट एट तेल्पोत पास्टिव और नेगेटिव देर इस नो न्यूट्रल पॉइंट सीएस पर्सन का जप्पे वालंटा देर इस नो न्यूट्रल पॉइंट फॉर ए क्रिस्टन एदर यू हद तू प्रोग्रेस ऑन और एदर यू हद तू सेट बैक मनमै मन कुण्टमंटा ओक स्टेज कोचिन तरवाता वी वांट तू हार्बर अट ए पार्टिकुलर कंफर्टेबल जोन वेयर वी थिंक डेट इस हाईएस्ट हेल्म आउट ऑफ फेड्स ऑफ डी क्रिस्टियनिट आर डी स्पिचुअलिटी डेट इस नॉट अंदिकने प्रपेंशमलो बाइबिल तरवा तच्छे दिकमगा अम्मड़बाय पुस्तकम तेल्स गदा पिलिग्रीम्स प्रोग्रेस बेडफोर्ड जायल नुंदे इंग्लैंडलो असाला गौरंग अनपस्त मनक आचर मेस्ट इलंट गौरमैन नांटलो अद्भुतमैन बक्तुलु प्रभुकोरके अलाइक जीविंस अड़बा अनकुण्टा जान बन्यान आज जान बन्यान चेतल में दिगा देवड़ू क्राइस्ट तोलक शिमाबल दिकलिंस्तनिक तिस्कुन वच्छना पुस्तकमे यात्रुकनी प्राय दांटलाय रास्त देर इस नो एंडिंग फॉर डी पिलिग्रीम डी एंडिंग फॉर डी पिलिग्रीम इस अप्लेस गॉड प्रिपेड इन हेव ओके यात्रुकनिकी ई भूमि दा मुगिम पनेद ले आ मुगिम पु परलोकमलोने देवड़ सिद्धपचन कनिक विषय मेंटंटे इप्पुर कोरेश रासु परिपालन चेटन कोचिनाड इल्ड योर एंड चप्पल आयन बाइबिल जादे अलवाट ले तरत वाली रिलीज जेसन डिक्रील मुड़ जादे अलवाट वाड़कुन्द इप्पुर बक्तुलु जप्पुर में कस्टम आईतुन्दे अलांट वाड़कु योर जप्तर कनिक देवड़ अलांट साला लो कोत्तमंदन पेटिंच बाइल पण्टले नम्मत अर्थमेंटे योर जप्पिंटर अनकुण्ट दानियल आयन प्रधानमंत्रीगा उन्ना कनिक दानियल दैरेंज जेस देवड़ आ स्थानलो उन्चे दिन दिकंटे दैरेंज रिस्क दिसको टानिकी यम फुल दिनेस देनिंग निदरु बनान्ले उन्ना वाड़ उन्ना ने पे वाड़ पोन अनकोले दानियल कनिक इस्तेल गुड अलाइक अनकुले कनिक दानियल इली कोरेश्त जप डेब्बाय समुसराल प्रवचन पूर्त आईपे ने लेट डी पीपल ऑफ इसरायल गो पातनी बंदनलोन अंते निर्गमा कानमलोन ने तमोशे वेली फरोद दगर जप्न लेट माय पीपल गो नाप प्रजलन पोनीमोन अक्र स्पास्टंगर रास्य नर मोशन अडिकु कोचित अपुरके मनक दानियल ने स्पास्टत लेक पे ना दानियल मात्रमय उन्नाड आयन पीरियडलो कुड़ा नल्ला राजुल पीरियडलो ओक प्रधानमंत्री उन्ना ने रायपन लगा मनव इस साला कस्टमिंग तेल्स गदा मैं इंडिया लोन नव प्रभुत्वाल मार्ते अलांट वतल उन्ताय उज्जवकस्तल में दल पतितल में दल साला साला टूफ स्विच अलांट इतना लु प्रभुत्वाल मार्ना कुड़ा व्यक्त देश स्थानमले अलागुन्नाड ओकोला प्रभुत्वानी बेटकोलन्ना पक्कन निरुपर कुण्टर गदा वाड़ उन्ना ने रु यदि उठेली डिसलोकेट सेटनिकी ट्राई जस्त कन दानियल में गुड अलाइ जेसे आइट्या दानियल देवड़ू सर्वोनत रेनी देवड़ अन्न रसु जेस निक दानियल देवड़ अकड़ बेटन उद्देश्य मिदे डी लॉफ्टी पर्पस ऑफ गॉड इस तू मेक अन पेटिशन बिफर सायरस डेट डी पीपल ऑफ गॉड हद तू मेक एक्सडस फ्रॉम बाबलो अंदिके दानियल अकड़ केले वाले जप्त अबुर कोरेश प्रजलन दान पंपिच इप्पुर प्रजल अनकुण्टन्ना नंटे ममल पंपिस्तन्ना गानी मैं दानियल लेट अपुर ओड़न सम्त अलाग अकड़ गाकुन इकड़ गाकुन नेत मनकी सवालक्ष अलोचन उस्ते तेल्स पास्टिव गरागन नेगेटिव साला उस्त एक वाट गुरिंच अलोचिस्त कनिक मज्जुले मन आईपोत एट उन्ते बाबलोनलान उन्ते मेली ओलावल डिसेंट परेल जस्तर जावत अर्शले उन्ते मेली ओलान डिसेंट जस्त कन मधुले मन आईते एटला कनिक ई जंक्शनलोने देवड़ू सरो दिसकुनी इसरायल दैरिपर्स्तनिकी अच्छे वार तोच अयपड़कुमो नेन नीचे पट्टुकुनी नानो नेन नीकु सहाय जेस इप्पुर अदमा मनमै लाइक दिसकोला कांटेस्ट मनम कुड़े यात्रलो प्रायनलो उन्ना कुन्साल लोकमेक कप परिस्थितिलो बट्ट बन्निंस्त बड़ी उन्ना कोरेश एस प्रभु वारक साधर्य अनकेसुक्रेस प्रभु द्वारा मनम विदल लपुंदिन
Mel type pain. In this, when someone tells you to go, you don't know what to do, you just go. When someone goes, it goes. And they control it. And they go, this is my beloved. Daniel, you are my great beloved. But they are so dear to me. I was so proud of Lucifer. They are so dear to me. They are so faithful to me. Because Daniel, the Lord, is the most powerful. He is the one who has brought them here. He has brought them to this place. He has seen them. And we have to be in high position, high realm of the world. Be faithful to him. And they are like this. When someone is faithful, he is faithful. When someone is faithful, he is faithful. They do the same thing. 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 It is a constant struggle. But one small help will turn the history upside down. That is, we can tell that. They are grateful to him. Because Christ was born, and God was made. When there is an opportunity for you to help. There is a message. Send it to me. Send it to me. I thought that. You send it to me. I am ready to receive it. If you send it to me, I am ready to receive it. But if you send it to me, I am ready to receive it. You send it to me, it is a personal matter. Then I will receive it. Send it to me. If you send it to me, it is a personal matter. They are against me. If you send it to me, I feel bad. If you send it to me, I feel bad. They are against me. I am not happy. If you say that, I am happy. Do you think? Do you think? Do you feel human emotions? Do you feel? Do you feel? This is what I think. Now, if we fake people, then people will be forbidden our help. Send it to me. Send it to me. Be faithful to God. I am not happy. It is a personal matter. So, four billion. Sure. Sure. You are in this time, you are not happy. You are in this bracket. You are not happy. Be faithful. You are not happy. Because God is faithful to you. There is a other source from which they get help. What is your problem? You are not. You are not. You are not. You are not. I am not happy. That is, there are four billion. I am not happy. I am not happy. I am not happy. I am not happy. It is a kind of treatment. It is a kind of treatment. You are helping. This is overly help. You are not involved in double. Like, you are not involved in material things. You are not involved in other time. You are not involved in anything. You are not happy. You are not happy. You are not happy. We should reconsider. It is a question. Now, we are coming to you. Raah. But if you come to me, it is very small. First, I am sorry. Then, first, I am sorry. I am sorry. I am sorry. Yes or no? Hmm? Very good. Then, we are Americans. We are Indian. What did you do? Why did you do that? Why did you do that? First, you need to do something. Now, if you are faithful, you do whatever you want. You are not happy. You are not happy. You are not happy. If you review it, you are not happy. It is like this. You are not happy. You are not happy. Why? Hmm? I am not happy. I am not happy. It is a question. Now, what is it? I am not happy. It is time for you to act. And act positively. Act willingly. Act sacrificially. Act fully. Act absolutely. If we are Americans. Okay? Now, you are not happy. There are consequences. In this state, I am not happy. I am not happy. I am not happy. I am not happy. Why are you doing that? You are not happy. Hmm? I am not happy. 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 It is a personal matter. Now, I am not happy. I am not happy. But it is a charity description. It is like this. It is a kind of treatment. I am not happy. It is a question. I am not happy. Hmm? Three. Four. End of year. It is chapter three. Was for last part in Thailand. This is. I am not happy. Because Christ was born. I am not happy. You know that. Only little things. My problems are a lot. If you open it, you will see. It is a question. A little thing. They are doing it. I am not happy. It is a complication. Do you understand? It is a complication. Because God is faithful to you. Now, I am not happy. I have a doctor in school. In the area. A medical shop. Clinic. They are watching. They are watching. They are watching. We are not happy. There are occasions. There are hospitals. A little prayer. They are suffering. They are compromising. They are not happy. Now, I am not happy. If you come to me, it is a question. It is a question. The Book of Esther would never have existed in the annals. Okay? God gave us. Be faithful. Now, you are not happy. I am not happy. I am not happy. I am not happy. I am not happy. But they are not faithful. Now, I am not happy. 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 Oh, brother, I am not happy. I am not happy. I am not happy. I am not happy. Hmm? Is it a parasite? Even a parasite is present in every weekend. What is it? Twenty? Hmm? I am not happy. Except the summer, Punggol, all other holidays. When I go to the temple. They call God. They are not happy. They are not happy. But they are like this. I am not happy. Feeble memory. Human beings. It is not happy. I am not happy. Now, I am not happy. I am not happy. Now, I have a question. At night, I am not happy. Do you understand? If you understand, I will tell you. It is a question. Ah, watch. Watch. It is chapter six, verse one.
On that night, could not the king sleep.
On that night, king could not sleep. There are occasions in the Bible. Hmm? I am not happy. Now, I am not happy. God is a king of kings. He can control the sleep of a king as well. But when someone is not happy. I am not happy. I am not happy. Here is a person who controls. At night, I am not happy. Now, if we are in a contest. It is a question. There is nothing. But when Christ said something, it is not happy. If you call your brother, he will help you. Sister, he will help you. He will do it. If you think that, I am not happy. If you think that, I am not happy. He has no right to expect help from mothers. And you do not think that God will send a help for you in due time. Do you know that? Newton's third. For every reaction. And there is equal. I underline that word. It is not unequal. People are the same. Whether you are happy or not. Whether you are happy or not. People are the same. I am not happy. I am not happy. Now, it is a question. Happy in the morning. But it is a risk. If he is not afraid, he will not save. I am not happy. Now, I have a story from the Bible. If you have a risk, you will not save. You are not happy. After all, what is there? A generation has been executed. Do you know? Yes or no? Hmm? No. Okay. What is it? God is another plan. Okay. Options, backups. I am not happy. Now, I will tell you. You are not happy. You are not happy. As you said, there may be other plans, backup plans. But God has no backup plan. He has only one. In the garage, there is a door. There is a door. Hmm? Only one plan. And he wants to execute that plan at any cost. Using people at any cost. You are not happy. In the Bible, it is 14 million cents. Can you imagine? Do you imagine a woman can save 14 millions of the people? Do you know the potential of a woman? People are not happy. They are not happy. You may think that you are so weak. The Bible says that in occasions like this. You are more than a powerful atomic power. You are exceptionally potential. You have a capacity to save 14 million people. You can stop that sword descending right from above. Over all the 14 million people. Who will have that capacity? Woman. So, so many times, we misjudge our God-given capacity and ability. Now, I am not happy. I am not happy. It is a question. It is a question. People are not happy. Profession is not happy. So, it is a question. People are happy. Profession is happy. But purpose. We ignore this. I am not happy. If the purpose is wrong, we ignore it. I am not happy. If you are not faithful, I am not happy. I am not happy. Let the people of God may survive. Now, you are not happy. He has prepared backups. Okay, the garage door. The main door. But God is not like that. They are not faithful. I am not happy. I am not happy. Hmm? I am not happy. They are not happy. They are flat. People are not happy. If you have time, I will make all interpretation of you. Now, if you are not happy, I will tell you. If you are not happy, I will tell you. If you are not happy, I will tell you. They are not happy. Now, I am not happy. 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 If you come to me, I will tell you. Now, how she. Divine wisdom presented her problem. Now, I am not happy. Now, I am not happy. Now, I am not happy. She is not happy. Yes, God gave you a option. There are other options. God has another plan. But God has a plan through Esther. God may have so many options. But he wants to do that through you. Through me. Through X, Y, Z. If I am able to stand in that position. God wants to use us. Because be faithful. If you are not happy, I will help. Help like Christ. Yes, it is God's help. Yes, God gave you a blessing. It is a question. 14 million of the prayers. Yes, God gave you a blessing. I am not happy. I am not happy. I am not happy. 14 billion. 1 billion. 14 million. I gave God a blessing. I gave God a blessing. Yes, God gave me a blessing. I gave him 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 a blessing. Now, I am not happy. I am not happy. Christ gave us a complete. I am not happy. Helping God. Be faithful to God. Help like Christ. Christ gave us a blessing. I gave him a blessing. Daniel. It is a tall example. Let these examples be engraved in our hearts. When I read, I check. God engraved me. You are not happy. I am not happy. You are not happy. I am not happy. I am not happy. I am not happy. I am not happy. There is no greater help. Other than saving. A condemned person into a converted sinner. That is the greatest help we can do. You are not happy. You are not happy. You are not happy. If you are not happy, then I will pray. I will tell you a story. Another church. In that church. There is a sister. She is a young doctor. 40 years old. She went to Hyderabad. She went. She is not happy. She is not happy. Her car. She went to America. She went to America. She is not happy. She went to the village. I know that. Usually, she went to the village. If she went to the village, she had a problem. If she went to the village, she had a problem. There are a lot of fake issues. It is a question. She went to the village. She is not happy. If you go to the village, you will come. This really happens there. There are a lot of trees. If you go to the village, you will come. So, it is a tough. But if you go to the village, you will have a problem. If you go to the village. If you see a tree. It is a question. If you go to the village. 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 I am not happy. If you go to the village. 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 I am not happy. Now, I am not happy. If you go to the village. There is a repair showroom. This boy went to the showroom. I repaired it. I am not happy. If you go to the village. I am not happy. I am not happy. I am not happy. If you go to the village. Please go ahead. What is it? It is a question. I am not happy. This is my thing. I am a mechanic. Now, if you go to the village. Now, if you go to the village. If you go to the village. I am not happy. If you go to the village. I am not happy. I am not happy. If you go to the village. If you go to the village. If you go to the village. I am not happy. Very rarely, in India, you will see a woman. In such a huge pregnancy, can serve as a waiter. Usually, there are ladies in star hotels. But you are not happy. Waiters. I am not happy. If you go to the village. I am not happy. Now, I am not happy. I am not happy. I am not happy. A little cover. I am not happy. Tip. Tip. It is gone. Now, I am not happy. If you look at the tips. I am not happy. Now, I am not happy. Now, I am not happy. I am not happy. I am not happy. I am not happy. If you go to the village. If you go to the village. If you are not faithful. This is a cover. If you go to the village. I am not happy. You give me a gift. Tip. Now, I am not happy. I am not happy. If you go to the village. If you go to the village. This is my wife. This is my wife. I repaired her car. I gave her a visit card. If you are not faithful. I am not happy. I am not happy. If you are not faithful. I am not happy. If you are not faithful. I am not happy. I am not happy. If you go to the village. If you go to the village. This is a workout. Every day, it is a workout. It is not necessary to write it. It is not necessary to write it.